It's way too late.
So he doesn't look late on the TV. Technically, I am fashionably late.
Fashionably, a couple of seconds late.
Society.
All right, so let's do the pledge allegiance while we have time.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you double dipping? Is that what you're doing, 7:30?
No, I'm double dipping tonight.
All right, what do you got for bills, payroll?
Bills and payroll right here. Minutes from February 14th and 21st.
Yeah, and I just have two comments on the February 14th minutes. And the reason why I want to have at least for short discussions, point out two things. On the February 14th, it's mentioned all throughout here why the $100,000 was put aside for the 15 grade road. It was for active recreation and it wasn't for anything else. Already in other committees like the Conservation Commission meeting, all may have said, well, they've already paid $100,000. They shouldn't have to pay any stewardship fee in perpetuity for monitoring that 14 acres. And it was mentioned that it was really for active recreation and the fact that it wasn't usable land. So it's good having it documented because people are already challenging it. We don't have something documented, it puts us at risk. As we know, as soon as they go back, it's worthwhile to see what's there. For example, 55 White Street, seeing that there's supposed to be recreational land there.
But now we're getting 55 White Street back.
Right, right, but I'm just saying.
So it's in there, so it's good.
Right, so that's good. That was, I was gonna say, another thing is very helpful is the statement that is here. Just read as well our conditions, which I'm having a hard time finding. But it was about when someone has a set aside, such as this 14 acre habitat area, that the properties aren't released until it's agreed to have a grantee for. It isn't just natural heritage, it's natural heritage, you have draft conservation restrictions. No one agrees to anything. And I can think of a property in town that no one has gone through natural heritage. The conservation restriction isn't written, isn't recorded. And the houses are built and they're having occupancy and that sort of screws up and there's no motivation for solving it. So this sort of addresses it. I mean, it doesn't say while the, it can't be released until the conservation restrictions record it. Probably should, but that would make life a lot easier. So it's good what we have in here for approving what we're doing. I just wanted to point that out because we've seen problems.
Yeah, that's what I want to make it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, that's good.
So just, you know, comment, that's very helpful. I see no problem with any of those three sets of minutes.
Good.
I'd move to accept them.
So many problem table?
Aye.
There's always very, very nice minutes.
Martin always does a great job of minutes. Even when she's not here, she does a great job.
Share his questions.
I saw today that the hundred came in, did you see that?
Oh, we cut the hundred grand?
Oh, and the things of interest is that no one's willing to take that conservation restriction.
Very interesting.
Of Mass Og lawn, Savory Valley trustee, local conservation.
Sign while you're talking.
I am.
Get you multitasked?
I did, I've already signed it.
So it's going in the general fund, all right?
It's being held in a separate account for the designated purpose, active recreation.
Right.
So it would require a vote of town meeting to appropriate the money out of that.
But it will be there.
Will we get matching funds for it still too?
Hard to say.
Until fall?
Matching funds are probably about a year from now.
And do we have a decision yet? Do we have a DOR decision?
Why, are they doing away with matching funds?
It's interpretation.
They only have matching funds, but there's some hoops that communities have to jump through in order to put those local funds into the community preservation.
It's interesting that for the CDA revision, that was an incentive that it sounds like to, to do that, it isn't being done as an incentive mechanism, sounds like very complicated.
Match the lot releases, there's a lot releases for Chestnut Farm then.
Oh, why don't you do that first? That's yeah, given you.
A draft.
A draft of the performance bonds, I think. What number is it?
Towards the top. Oh, nine, eight and nine.
Yep. Numbers eight and nine. We finalized the security with the bond agreement with the numbers that we hold and the only thing you have to do is sign and date the documents.
Okay.
Do it all or just don't have to sign it?
Actually, there's room for everybody to sign on this one.
Might as well cremate everyone.
And then the same thing with the re-release of the lots, since some of the lot numbers changed. It went from 1B to 1C. I was recommending new lot releases for all of them and their attorney agreed, so we prepared the new lot releases.
We got no more money for it, we're just using what we have, right?
Right, right, because it's the same list of words.
So should we move on?
Moving second, to the lot releases, the new lots that were made on Chestnut Farm. Second, on favor, aye.
Aye.
And then to confirm the wording or just take a vote to approve the bond agreement.
Reaffirm, yeah. 1C, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6B, 7B, 8B, 9B, 10B, 11, 12 and 13 are all shown on the plan. Just a final modification of the terms of division. Lots, 13, 14, 15 are here, but releases called 1C, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6B, 7B, 8B, 9B, 10B, 11B, 12 and 13.
Queen B.
Anybody, have any problem with this?
Not at all.
All right, well, it's assigned then, on those in favor.
Aye.
Ray Hartman's on again last night. Does anybody know who won with you Lowell and Yale?
It was 2-2.
After 2.
Well, it was still in the board business, I got a call from Doug Duchesne today. And he said to me that, to relate to you guys, the board, that deflected could be, are out of town, but they're interested in working with the development and the planning board to develop the open space bylaw language, recreation bylaw.
Don't we have a discussion with that at 8 o'clock? We'll take it up now.
We have other people coming in at the same time. They should hear it as well.
Excellent.
And the other board business was the Washington Drive.
We get the language squared on that.
Do you want to see the red line or just the final? Just the final.
And I'm just trying, what were the implications on that? I know there's a disagreement. Okay, it's gonna be in cave there. But what were the implications are, why is critical?
Actually, back here, I did a draft of the decisions. Sherry had some recommendations. I sent all of that to town council, he came back with a recommended version that Sherry agrees with, so.
So we're in agreement.
And just for your information, the only thing I disagreed with was there were three paragraphs that left it contingent on something. And I didn't want it going to the registry contingent on things because then a title examiner would never know if those contingencies had been made.
Although one case talked about town council having to approve revisions, which would probably have to happen anyway.
So we got town council to approve the revisions beforehand and then it goes without that.
So it's a way of reasonable language.
That's all.
Yeah, they're probably gonna have to do that anyway. So you're just face on median would give the lower.
Well, it said gravel driveway only if the fire department approves it. So no one would ever know whether the fire department approved it, it wasn't the mechanism.
I understand a little bit better.
It was also about the upkeep of the property, correct?
Yeah, that's still in there. That's more to be restriction to.
Does it also include the under? Well, it says that the road will be maintained, but what about the substrate or the?
Yeah, I think it says it in there.
We already signed it.
What number is this one?
Actually, it's the new one that I just handed out.
The red line? Or what you just?
The red line and the one, sorry, the one next to it is the final.
That's for.
That's the final. If you look under the conditions, decisions.
What's all this? So that's for.
We're also signing this apparently.
Okay. Keep all the paper on for the, with the board. I didn't start.
So if you look at number four.
That's where they changed, or is what they changed to that, to include the drains?
Number five. You've got a, deed of private maintenance agreement.
This is all, this is all.
I know, you've got all.
Maybe one extra form side.
Don't see him, I was gonna sign the other one, right?
That's clear.
The other.
The deadline revision to the Washington Drive.
That's.
Revision.
Right.
And there's a legal reason for that.
It's clear, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We approved it a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
This is, this is what we're competing with here.
Yeah.
Okay, you can look at that one.
All right, we have 7:45.
You ready to vote on the Washington Drive?
Which is this one?
Confirm the.
Take a vote to confirm.
Confirm the changes. Okay.
For Washington Drive?
Yeah.
And that one there, what is, this is the redesign of the town council, that one. So that is the one.
Motion to approve the revisions from town council for the Washington Drive extension.
Yeah, approve the final wording.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Who are the owners? Doug Shaw and Jerry Garaboto?
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey.
And do you want this stated too, or do you want to make any difference?
All right.
The red line.
All right, we're good, so at 7:45. I think the public hearing, 502 Street. I did go out and meet Mr. Ratcher out there about flaring the entrance a little bit and fixed it, he's probably my doctor, about changing the configuration of some of the parking spaces on the side. And a walkway for the people coming from IBM, so they come into the back. There's no way you can put a sidewalk there, but he has a.
Paid it.
They have, no, they have a walkway in the back that he's gonna, he's gonna do, make it a little more formalized.
Mark, the people that are on TV, could you explain what we're about to?
I think he's wanting to. We've seen the map. And Jerry.
We're talking about the mobile station in the center of town.
Interesting how I think that would go as far as.
Okay, do you want to walk us through the changes, what we talked about?
All right, for the record, my name is David Jordan, I'm an engineer at Lance Aveo with MHF Design.
Yeah, it's a matter, does a camera capture?
All right, so since we were here last time, we took another look at the site, particularly in regards to the parking layout. And then talking to Gary, I hope what we've done has gone back to the old adage, you can't a pro, don't fix it. So really what we're doing here with this plan is to extend, distribute the seating. All of the existing parking along, just off of King Street, the angle spaces at this location, the parallel spaces up alongside the brick walkway, the little patio area, those are gonna stay exactly the way they are. They work now, people are used to them, so why change it? On the back of the building and the sides of the building where the service base currently are, we are gonna be restriping those areas. The parking spaces back here remain the same. We're taking out a couple parking spaces here just so that vehicles can make the turnaround in the building. But we still have three spaces that are currently existing down at this location here. So the plan that you have in front of you now has 49 spaces, virtually identical to what's out there currently, even with a little bit of restriping we're doing. One of the things that the board asked at the last meeting was that we widen the entrance for this driveway coming off of Route 119. We've done that, we pulled the curving back to help facilitate vehicles making this turn into the site. So that's shown on the plan there.
The new thing's the dotted area?
The new is the dotted area. So it's gonna be take out the landscaping and put in a full pavement section at that location. And the other thing I want to mention, I know last, at the last meeting, there was some talk about the counter service and seating. One thing I just do want to get on record just over here, there is a picnic table outside on this patio area currently that will be, they, he is gonna maintain that, so that will remain. And in fact, if there's a demand, he would like to add possibly a second picnic table in the future, if there's a demand for it. So I just, I know there was quite a bit of discussion about.
We're not gonna count on this permanent seating, so.
It's truly seasonal seating, for one thing, so.
Well, for pedestrians, coming.
Now, you mentioned taking out landscaping, is there, what's the end result? I mean, I realize it's to facilitate traffic movement safety, but is there still some landscaping?
It's just at the corner, it's just a little bit.
Just this oval?
Just that little. That little moon sliver that's on the plan there.
Five feet is square feet.
Right, but there is some landscaping someplace.
That's more mulch than anything else.
Yeah, that's, I think lawn or mulch currently.
Okay, I mean, because of center of town and, you know, try and make it friendly.
Yeah, what happens, if I may, is a lot of people run over and have a hard time keeping grass there, so we have parked mulch there and so.
Looks nice the way it is, I like it.
Thanks.
But you're gonna be cutting back on that, right?
So he's only cutting out the mulch, that's.
Oh, okay.
Right there, they're, because they're running over, it's getting muddy.
Sure.
So I'm trying to just kinda keep it a little bit cleaner.
Yeah, I'm looking for sign of.
Are you still gonna do the, the walkway in the back to try to get the?
I should have mentioned that, yeah. Right now.
Yes.
There is an existing kind of informal path between IBM and the site here. That's gonna be maintained, actually Gary's gonna try to improve that a little bit because it was really impossible to get people to come around to Route 119. Actually, we really want to discourage that just because of the safety issue. So the pathway through here, that'll be improved.
Are you gonna have any pedestrian striping from the sidewalk on King Street into the station or the?
There is.
Seating area, I don't see any striping on this.
I'm not sure there is striping, I mean, this.
On what?
On the sidewalks?
Yeah, the sidewalks there.
Sidewalks, right, pedestrian striping.
So there is a pathway to go.
There's a pathway to actually guide people into a specific area, so they're not just walking down the middle of the driveway.
There's none there currently.
So the idea is to guide people?
Exactly, yeah.
Oh, that's an idea.
You mean a walkway across the property to the doorway?
Like the painted.
That's what I'm talking about.
Like a crosswalk.
A painted crosswalk across to the door you're gonna put on the side.
I mean, people might ignore it, but it's the right place.
We could paint something right across here.
And maybe do a different color, maybe like a green or something on top of it.
If he doesn't have a curb cut from the, from the walkway onto, across the grass and onto the pavement, then, well.
Well, there's something intelligent.
Something in there at all.
It would have to be, is part of the driveway. That's the only, that's the only thing, it would have to be painted where the driveway is right now, right through here. Because you're right, they don't have any openings in the curbing.
Yeah, you have to ask them to extend the sidewalk into its property.
And you have to do a curb cut, put some pavers in and.
Put that in.
That's where you start, but they're, everyone's gonna cut the corner anyways. So they're gonna walk, nobody walks 90 degrees unless you're at West Point, so. I think it's hunky dory the way it is. I wouldn't paint, and more paint, you know, Jesus.
The only thing I was trying to point out here is that to get from the sidewalk to the station, you have to, you have to walk through an area where there's a lot of traffic.
Lot of traffic, yeah. Black to guide.
You know, paint a striped area helps people figure out where to go.
Well, if a car comes at them pretty quick, they'll get the exercise they hadn't had all day long.
Or I think it does spread with the lot car traffic to the resort.
If he was gonna do that, you have to extend the sidewalk. You don't wanna do it from here, you have to extend the sidewalk into somewhere that's car crossed, which would go through parking lanes.
Either that or it's gonna just put a, cut through the grass here.
Pick the path at least.
Well, I think that's exactly right. They're gonna, they're gonna see the door and they're gonna go, they're gonna look, look both ways, see if cars are coming, then they're gonna head straight for the door.
Just like they do with all the other gas stations that we.
All the other gas stations, all the other parking malls, everywhere.
They just find the easiest way to get to the door.
And why don't we leave it up to decide what sort of works, I mean, I think you have to be on the ground, look at.
And I think Mr. Ratcher's done a wonderful job with his gases and I think he was a pedestrian problem.
Well, I mean, I just think, but I just think when we're asking these kinds of things, we're not, we're discussing this, we're not compelling them to do anything.
I think we leave it up to him to do.
Right, so just suggesting, you guys have to get here. So maybe for, yeah, we're just suggesting that maybe you look at, if it makes sense, do it.
You know, if you, the point is that, you know, we, we're encouraging pedestrian friendliness in the center of town. And so part of that would be to, you've got, you're gonna have this nice area where people can go with your coffee or donuts or whatever, and they'll not come in just from cars, they'll come in from the sidewalks possibly.
So Mr. Cherry says, if they're coming down King Street from the westward line, let's say, other address of.
By IBM, yeah.
They would normally be cutting across this grass and heading straight to the door. So his suggestion is, let's see where they develop their natural pathway and then he'll stripe it. He agrees the striping would be safer.
Yeah, if it makes sense.
Where it ends up being.
It's gonna be different anyway because you're putting that door on the side now too.
Yeah.
So we'll have to see how, you're right, see how.
But speaking of pedestrian friendly, any objection if we get the board to help approve it, put a couple of tables inside as well?
Oh, I think that's a great idea.
Now, now you're talking about seating, that's the issue, so we have to.
Seated restaurant, it's only for a health concern, but.
But it's also a parking concern, it's our, our thing. You, when you originally first said you were gonna have no seating. Are you considering putting some sort of seating?
Well, the only I was reconsidering is possibly, is if I had like even a, like a bar, like a bar's table or a little bench that was a little locked off down.
Some people could sit and while, instead of driving, they softly get the gas, they wanna relax a little bit.
It's not a killer, it's just that it was a thought, that's all.
No, and we had talked about it earlier because of, because of the seating that's up at the other. People like to come in and sit and relax and have a cup of coffee.
Is it gonna be fixed seating or?
Does it trigger anything with us?
Well, it probably would be.
Yeah.
Mike, it's a, it'd be. Well, it really isn't loose seating. You either decide if you wanna, if you wanna address the seating issue right now or you don't wanna address the seating. And I think you should address it right now. Okay, there's, we're giving him a waiver on the amount of parking that he has now. He wants to put in eight of 10 seats, is that what?
I would say eight of the most.
Do you think that's gonna be significant enough to warrant an issue with parking?
Not with me.
Yeah, I mean, you said.
Maybe eight.
Eight.
No, I think it's good for the winter.
Two cars.
I think it, I think it would be absolutely.
No fault.
So we solved the issue right then and there.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, it'll probably help, especially in winter.
I think you should have some seating in there because people nowadays are gonna wanna sit and relax and have a cup of coffee, just like they're doing.
I'll try to fit that in, I haven't got the whole plan done.
I don't think it's, we're worried about the square footage side. I think the biggest concern is whether or not you have enough spots for people to wanna sit and have a cup of coffee and park there for 45 minutes.
Thank you.
That's great. So it makes more sense to take care of it now than having an issue that hangs.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing if all of this, the board thinks we're all done. So move.
Second.
All in favor of closing the hearing, seeing about a thing I had.
Aye.
All in favor of approving the plan 72? You wouldn't stop me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a draft decision and I didn't have time to pull another one. If you want to just do generic or the general conditions and then I'll bring back the final wording for the next meeting. So.
This is a.
Can we just close it and?
We close it.
Vote it and we'll.
We really kinda need some sort of conditions to, how do we do it? First thing, last one.
Do you have the last set of conditions on this?
No, that's what I mean.
Same suggestions, they went with every suggestion we had, so.
All right, Ma, what conditions, no sodium, do I see what else we can put in there? Keeping it maintained, open it maintained all time. You guys wanna be expedient, you wanna?
It's for each of us, we can get started.
Make everyone come up and show their.
We're gonna put the line we did about the seating.
Yeah, and then we have to add the seating back to it, no more than. Why don't you just let us know, we're just going to.
Maybe just that'll slow you down?
You said more than eight.
Slow down by two weeks maybe?
Yeah, two weeks.
Can we let them start? It's a building, it's a building department that's gonna give you the permit for it to be paid.
What, you're gonna start tomorrow?
I'd love to.
Good?
You could get your demolition permit. Get the what? Your demolition permit without this.
What's in front of you, site plan review and?
Special permit.
Yeah, we have to list all of that and then Ma really needs to do it.
If you follow to the T, we won't slap his hand for any reason.
No, well, you can start at your own risk, and I don't feel like to.
We don't slap anyone.
We'll get, because it is special permit, because you're asking for waivers from the parking lines, so we'll put that out and that. You know, there's no need to slap it necessarily. So we'll just, we'll just take a vote on it at the next meeting. We'll come into this through Washington Drive, let's get it right.
Yeah, but look at the engineers then.
Is it five minutes?
He can pay it by dollar.
All right, so we're, we're done. All right, so we'll do it 7:30, we'll do this board, 7:30 on the next meeting. And the next meeting's gonna be the 25th?
Yeah.
Do it on the 25th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 8 o'clock, over there abouts.
Yeah, there may be other people coming from, but advertising and such. And there may be others swatting. Oh, three, sorry.
You and I have to dress up next time, you still dress up this time, it's our turn.
I don't rest it. This isn't a Joseph A. Banks conversation.
All right, so we cut the 11th, what do we, I mean, the 25th, what do we have on for the 25th?
Let's see, Chris is gonna probably be ready for an executive session on Moore Lane. Do you wanna start that early, like 7 or 7:15?
Yeah, getting that out, yeah.
Okay.
I did speak to him today about it, but didn't really have any.
Yeah, there was some interest in having a formal conversation ahead, I knew you were away when that happened. So I don't know, that may make sense if it moves legal, so.
What was that, same time again, Ma?
Um, well, what do you wanna do? Well, what do you want to do, seven or seven fifteen?
Seven, why don't we do seven, why don't we try to be here?
I can do seven.
Seven fifteen?
No.
All right, seven thirty. So we'll do seven thirty, we'll do that right after that.
We just told them to do their stuff the first time, yeah.
Well, that's all right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Jerry can't be here until seven thirty. Okay, so we have that.
Okay, we're going to have a tree, scenic road special permit hearing for a single family home on Bruce Street. Pretty quick, Congregational Church has asked for an informal discussion on, they're looking at an addition and they want to look at the parking layout.
I had a Warren call me about that, yeah.
Right, Aquifer District, so it's pretty tight over there.
What do they have, what's it percent now?
Is that the one across from Morgan?
Yes, it is. I don't know what the information is, but we had an older site plan, so we do have some of that information.
He's talking about being up over forty.
They were, he was going to look at some of the numbers and look at alternatives. And then at eight o'clock, we've got the zoning bylaw and public hearing for the medical marijuana moratorium.
Okay.
So that's already scheduled for eight, so I have to schedule the other stuff around that. I will do seven thirty, I'll take the vote.
That way if Chris wants to stay for the medical marijuana, if he needs to stay for that, we can do that as well.
Okay, so then I'll pick the other stuff after.
Okay.
I can do that.
All right.
And then April, May meetings in May would be the sixteenth, so that's after town meeting, May sixteenth and thirtieth. That gets us away from the Thursday before Memorial Day.
May sixteenth, we talked about if we're going to start the extensive recreation, having that meeting on the sixteenth if that kick off, so. Can we, do we need to have a planning board meeting? Or if not, maybe we could have a quick one before it and then do it, because hopefully we don't have that much, right?
I don't have anything for it yet.
Okay, we'll probably try to keep away from doing that, the sixteenth will be open and we can start on that day.
Yeah. That's what I'll shoot for.
Did we hear, is the sixteenth good for Mark?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so we have an eight o'clock, and it is eight o'clock now.
Do we have Mark or is he going?
He's not going to be here tonight.
We have an eight o'clock discussion, the public process for drafting an amendment for the extensive recreation and farmland protection bylaw. Myself, Mr. Bergman, Mr. Champion, Maureen and Margaret, we met last Thursday, was that when the last one?
It was a Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. And we discussed moving forward with the extensive recreation bylaw. I think we all agreed that having Mark there would be an asset because of all the good work we've done with him in the past. So we came to the conclusion that we're going to try to start it, as I just said, on the sixteenth and try to do every other week. I don't know how that's going to play out through the summer with our board and with Selectmen, but we're going to do it as an open meeting so that any interested residents can come and watch what we're doing and participate in the process. And I guess the way we started when we talked is, we're going to start from the top down, we're going to come up with an objective of what we want the bylaw to accomplish, definitions, just basically overhaul the whole thing, start from scratch. I mean, we talked about it, it's a thirty-year-old bylaw that nobody can really remember why it was done and how it was done, so let's basically start from scratch. That's kind of what we talked about. Did we get, do we have to worry about funding for Mark or are we?
Not yet, we're working on that. When we met with Mark Rassikoff, we had mentioned a couple of areas substantively. One is amending the extensive recreation bylaw. The other was sort of the more general thing of farmland preservation, which could be addressed somehow. From MAPC's standpoint, they have funds committed to agricultural projects, so to the extent that we can, you know, hitch our wagon to that, it's going to be easier to fund it. But Mark, you know, understands what the dynamics are here, he's worked with us over a number of years and, you know, would be ready to facilitate a process. We had indicated we wouldn't be stopping any kind of committee, because that just takes time. It would be a series of joint meetings between the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board and whoever else, you know, it could be Agricultural Commission, Conservation Commission, whoever else, and the public.
Right.
But that, what we had was a high degree of confidence in Mark Rassikoff to run a facilitated process for us so that while we'd all be meeting jointly, the idea would be to turn the meeting over to Mark to facilitate how it would go, to come up with, you know, issues to work on for the next meeting and that Mark would be a good one to be doing the follow-up in between meetings.
We talked to, also talked about having Mark and Maureen before we even started, kind of get us a guideline of what other towns are doing and some basic bylaws as to what the purpose and intent and things like that, so we can, because we have to kind of start with what the intent that this is going to be. You know, the first one was the intent was to put a golf course in, so. So now if we get some more background stuff before we start, so we can start there and let's be work our way back. So that's what Mark and Maureen were hopefully going to be able to give us a little bit of a heads up or a foothold when we meet on the sixteenth. Time-wise on the sixteenth, when do you want to, do you want to do it, do you want to do it at a seven o'clock meeting?
Seven's better than eight.
All right, so there's more people.
Yeah, six is better than eight.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do it at six, but most people are meeting at six. I think seven's probably the best time.
And some people commute also from a distance.
Actually, we probably should see what's good for Mark. Why don't we say?
I think earlier, I'm sure that he'd rather be on the road and out in the morning hour earlier.
Go through the clock a little early.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the Agricultural Commission, I'd like to see at least they're posted along with us and the Conservation Commission, you know, so that if they do show up there in session, so they can actually deliberate. So we've got to make sure that happens too, Keith.
Well, we deliberate, I know you guys, did you post this? I mean, we're.
For your fifteen minutes for tonight, we're, for substantive discussion will be posted.
And I do know for Ag Commission and Concom, they may be posted in paper, but often are not posted electronically. And if you're trying to involve people, make sure they're all posted electronically.
We'll post it with everybody then, so that they can all.
Yeah, we'll make sure they can be involved.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Any chance we could try like for the police station?
The police station?
I think it's more. Yeah, for a big room with a large table, yeah. And I'm told that they'll be able to broadcast live by then.
So do you want to have it there and then we'll schedule it for down there? Are you sure it's available?
We usually have bumping lines, so.
Okay. Well, why don't we do it that way? We'll have it at seven o'clock in the police station. So we'll start it that way, at seven o'clock in the police station, we just keep extending it that way. My board have any questions?
Yeah, one of the questions I have, and this is talking to Mark Rassikoff, actually I went to Framingham, there was a discussion with all sorts of planning people and police stuff about medical marijuana moratoriums, et cetera. And, you know, Mark Rassikoff was wondering if extensive recreation actually is going to really be completely what the Fletchers want. I mean, there's a need for extensive recreation in general. Some may overlap in part of what we've heard from the Fletchers, but maybe not all of it. And so, yeah, what's the true focus? Because whatever we do in extensive recreation is going to be town-wide.
Well, that was what the consensus when we talked about it, it's not just going to be for the Fletchers.
Right.
It's going to be for all the.
Right, so then that's the prime focus and may solve part of the Fletchers' problems, but maybe not all, but, yeah.
And one of the things we talked about was we were trying to come up with an idea of where to start, how big an area to start with. And I think we started, we talked about starting with the Cooper property, however big the Cooper is, if it's thirty-three acres, let's start with properties that are thirty-three acres or bigger unless there's a compelling reason to go for something else.
Oh, as a threshold, like open space development, ten acres on.
Well, we can, like I said, that's just, you know, we're just kicking that around, six of us when we start, that's how we're going to, we're going to put it as a townwide, it's not just.
So the larger thing, but also being a shoulder camp and all sorts of.
Every place, yeah, we're talking about all the big open space areas that we still have. Who else?
That means beginning to fragment large, but, well, we'll deal with it, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? The only thing I brought up was when you talked about trying to get it done by August, it's just going to be done in the summer and how people's schedules are, you know, we're at Mark's.
I think we have the fall meeting, right? I mean, that's our target.
That's October, so we still have.
Yeah, if the, if we have a special town meeting, my best guess it will be maybe the first or second week in November, just to look back. We did promise ourselves we would close the warrant forty-five days prior to that and then closing at thirty in the fall. We need forty-five days to give everybody enough time, so.
That's September.
So, you know, late September.
Okay.
But if we're involved in the public process all along, then, you know, we get it done by Labor Day, if it's a zoning article, you'd then need, you can meet, you know, there are forty years.
What, let's just set some expectations before we go through this process. I mean, we should have a pro forma plan laid out, which is particularly what we're going to discuss at the meeting, right? I mean, we're really talking about is how much square footage of recreational intensive use or agricultural land that can be developed that currently can't be developed yet. That's really what's on the table. So I hope we're not going to spend meeting after meeting talking about a lot of other things. We should have a predefined agenda and what, you know, let's get the hot topic out.
Absolutely.
Get it done upfront. If we're going to nail any particulars, we do that afterwards.
And I think that's why Mark will.
Because then we could get it done by August.
All right, we think in four or five good meetings, we could probably get it out of the way with Mark, what we talked about.
But we shouldn't talk around in circles, we're really talking about is putting more land under pavement than we currently allow to under a bylaw today. That's what we're talking about.
We're talking about putting land under pavement that currently is, is not allowed.
Underpaved.
Not underpaved. Okay, I mean, you want to slice it, but that's what we're talking about.
And are we, well, I guess that may come up later, but is it just building, building and parking? Sometimes parking should be considered.
Parking has to be considered, it's pavement.
It isn't there now, that's why you mention it.
Anyone that we've heard from the Selectmen in this board, anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns? So, did I miss anything, Keith? Sixteenth, we're going to do seven o'clock, sixteenth?
Yeah, sixteenth, and we will, Mark's been very good in working with us in the past about getting stuff in advance and getting circulated.
And he pulled up other towns and everything else, he does a good job. And he'll try to circulate it, we'll try to get it circulated.
Circulated or we'll have it available at the website and elsewhere, so people can come prepared and talk.
And Ms. Rich, can I reiterate the Fletchers?
Rich?
Yeah, I heard from Dr. Shane today, and he asked me to pass along to the board that the Fletchers are out of town right now, but that they're very interested in following along through the full process and being on the ballot in the fall.
Okay, Richard.
Ed, did you say anything about the current ballot? I guess it's whether we have a public hearing or not. So they're looking towards the fall being on the ballot. They have citizen petition currently.
Yeah, I was just going to ask about that myself, that the, the sixty-five days that the Planning Board has to hold a hearing on the petitioned article comes out at the end of May, I didn't know if you were going to be scheduling a hearing. I mean, essentially, if you have sixty-five days to hold the hearing or not, and then if you don't, then those zoning amendments can come forward at a future town meeting. And I've been answering, the press has been asking, well, are these articles going to get pulled from the warrant and what happens if they don't? And the answer I've given is that if the town meeting can only vote on a zoning amendment if there's been a planning board hearing held prior to the town meeting and if the Planning Board has issued its recommendations to town meeting. But we close the warrant forty-five days before town meeting, you have sixty-five days to hold your hearing and we passed the policy which requires ninety days prior to town meeting for petitioned article, which would have been February. So the fact that these came in in mid-March meant that they came in long after our self-imposed deadline for when we want a petitioned article to be received. So I think it's a practical matter that town meeting won't be, and I'm putting a booklet out to the printers tomorrow to advise people about town meeting articles and what it will say regarding the, those two zoning articles, is to just reiterate that if there's no hearing and there's no recommendation, town meeting cannot consider those articles. It's our expectation they won't be voted on.
But there's two articles, one was very controversial and elaborate, another one was very narrow focus in our discussion here. There's no disagreement.
I don't think we're going to do either one.
But if you don't, if you don't have your hearing and you don't issue a recommendation, then you don't, then town meeting cannot vote on them.
It makes more sense to.
Although, yeah, we didn't have a full board of Selectmen last time, and the board of Selectmen here had no issue about changing who was the special granting authority.
I still think we need to do it all at the same time with the meetings that we're having starting on the sixteenth.
The general understanding is those two articles won't be voted on at town meeting and whatever concerns they raise is being folded into this process. We're needing to shut the rest of this.
It makes more sense to deal with all those issues on the sixteenth.
I just didn't know if there's opportunity, but, yeah, it makes sense what you're saying.
Okay, all right. So sixteen, we'll get, Maureen will make sure that we CC all the boards that want to, that should be allowed, that want to come, and we'll make sure we make it available to the public on a regular basis. Maybe sixteen, I mean, no, no, no. May sixteenth, Keith.
So we're going to wait four weeks for.
Well, we have to wait till town meeting's all over and everything else like that.
No, Planning Board has a meeting on April twenty-fifth.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with this, right?
Every time that phone rings, I hear it ringing.
Anyway, so we're going to, yeah, we're going to try not to have a meeting of our own, if we can help it on the sixteenth instead of this one. If we do, we'll have a smaller, quick meeting before you have to do something.
We're out.
We're out, yeah. Anyone else? Thank you all. We have eight fifteen, informal discussion, Great Road, Grand Town Line Resonance of Development.
Any insight?
Most common, right?
Well, he canceled last time, he asked to be rescheduled to this meeting and, hi.
All right, well, since it's informal, we can hold, we can talk about SOR, right?
Hello.
Hi there.
Hi.
Do you want an informal discussion with us about the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study?
Yes, and thank you for allowing us to be on your agenda even though we're not on the up and coming May town meeting. But I do want to take any opportunity I can right now just to kind of get people thinking about this because we will ask to be maybe invited back closer to town meeting in the fall for even more information. I think what's really great is as we have these kind of discussions, we're hearing questions that we now have to think about to find the answers, and so I think that everything is evolving. It's a very complex thing that we've been studying, and so I just wanna, anyone that's interested in this town should be interested in this topic, so if I could take some time to talk about it, thank you so much. So, the Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee has been meeting for almost three years, two and a half years, and what we, I've been using, I've been using this diagram every time I talk to someone. I really like it because the top part of the diagram, we've been basically coming up with a concept of something that could be feasible, and I don't know if you all understand that we're looking to, for a limited sewer district, for only the common area that would only be for property owners, business owners and property owners, not residential, not for the entire town. And it would be a system that would be paid for by the users of the system proportionally. So, the more that they use, the more that they would pay. The smaller property owners wouldn't use as much, they wouldn't pay as much. And we have come up with a concept, and now it's time to move on and look further. So, the next, the next phase would be to move forward with a preliminary design, which in essence is sort of another feasibility study that's in more detail. And that preliminary design is broken down into two phases, and we will be asking the town for approximately five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to fund the preliminary design. But if we get halfway through it to phase one, the town won't, won't have to pay for the entire thing just for what we've spent at that point. If it ends up going full on and we find that it is feasible and this preliminary design goes one hundred percent full design and then to construction, the users of the system, this cost would be folded into and the taxpayers wouldn't be paying for it. From what I understand, Ed Bonnie Holston can clarify the details of that. But the system that we're looking at, if it is feasible, will be paid for by the users of the system, and the whole point is to help with economic development, which would then help the town out with taxes and other things that we want. But that's just kind of a background. Do you have any questions? Does anybody have any questions?
Would that five sixty be rolled into their fee so that the town would reimburse the five sixty from the users?
That's how I understand it, and having conversations with Bonnie Holston, that's how I understand it.
And let's assume we get into it and we're halfway through and the feasibility says this is foolish?
Right.
The town's out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
About that, yes. Yeah, actually, I have two hundred and eighty-six thousand.
So, have you talked to, like, is Toyota gonna hook in?
Well, we, last year, we did a survey, and it was a very basic survey, and we got enough responses back from that survey that made us think that this is worth continuing on and moving on. We don't have signed contracts. That's what the preliminary design will be, will be getting.
You need commitment.
Yeah, commitment, exactly. We don't, we don't have a signed on a dotted line commitment yet.
I'm pretty certain that Toyota's out of the district.
They're in, they're in the overlay.
Yeah. We shouldn't focus on Toyota. Toyota's a very small user. It's a very big building, but a very small.
No, I understand, but it's a very big system.
Actually, I have this, I have this other diagram that, it kind of, one of the big users would be Wells IBM. So, this is kind of a diagram.
If they want you.
I've been showing around. So, Wells IBM would be a big user, Sam Park's would be a big user, and then we have a bunch of little tiny properties in the common.
Yeah, it really raises a question that IBM did very professionally, private, did efficiently, no problems with it. You know, his board health had no problem with it. Sam Park, actually, I renewed the Cisco permit, that's what he did. If those are the, hold up, it's what, three quarters of the users, more than three quarters of users, why isn't there someone, private person, paying for doing those small amount? They're already, you know, just thinking, you know, having worked with it, you know, I understand the ins and outs.
Yep.
It was chartered to do a feasibility study, fifty thousand. Money came from different sources, you know, four times the amount has been spent.
Yeah, we have, we have four times the value.
Okay.
So, can you let me finish my question before you just, you already stepped in front of me. I'm not done with my question.
Okay, man, go ahead.
So, if you haven't got a commitment from your biggest users, how much of a commitment do you need to make it work? Do you need to have IBM and Sam Park on board, both of whom already have systems in place?
I think we would, in order for this to be feasible. I think that absolutely, because if it's going to be that whole entire area, I think that that would probably be pretty important.
And would it be, would it be gravity fed or force system?
We're actually looking at a system, and is Julie here?
No.
Or maybe, so, we're looking at a system that is different than a conventional sewer system. Do you guys wanna try it?
Yeah, I have a couple things if I could, sure. Force of gravity, it's probably gonna be both. I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have places up high and places down low. So, you know, the collection systems, that's down the road, that's what we're gonna figure out in this preliminary design report. As far as IBM is concerned, it's more Wells. They're the owner of the property. I mean, IBM's there, they're probably gonna be there for a long time, but the owner is Wells. And we've talked to Wells, their system is old, and, you know, they haven't come out with a written commitment, but they're very interested. They flew all the way up here a year or two ago just to talk about this, and they did say they're interested. You know, IBM has long-term goals there that that system's not gonna be adequate. So, for developers like Wells and for developers like Sam, Sam Park, have said that they don't wanna be in the sewer business. They would rather just write a check and say, let it go away.
That's why I asked you the question, because everybody has talked about it. They don't want everyone to play.
Right. And the unfortunate thing, and I'll turn this back over to Megan, the unfortunate thing about this is called the preliminary design report, which makes it look like we're going, you know, we are going to design. That is an industry term. In order for people to send us the RF, their qualifications, we had to put it out there. But what it really is, is a big portion of it is feasibility. You're like, you're just gonna mention, if we get through half of it and it's not feasible, then we stop there. If we get through the end and it's not feasible, we stop there. But hopefully, what we're gonna do is gonna get a much closer look at the feasibility of this. Right now, there's so many moving parts that could make it feasible. They're gonna narrow some of those down and tell us when and how it may be still feasible.
So, some of the things I've already heard is that we were gonna be able to use existing fields like Sam Park's, like what's left from Wells, incorporate them in the system so we don't have to build a central plant just for that area.
Right. I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say fields. Sam Park has made clear he doesn't want any disposal. He doesn't wanna dispose anyone else's water on his property, very reasonable. But he does have land with a treatment plant, and again, no commitments, and, you know, but there has been discussion where he's willing to work with the town as far as, you know, land for, you know, some of the use of the town.
And Ted, the commitments, I think, are, and Megan, are, they're part of this preliminary design report. They're gonna get letters of commitment as part of the preliminary design report, so you won't go past that phase without having written, you know, basically contractual commitments, as far as I understand, and that they're obligated to it once they say, yeah, we're gonna do it.
So, let's say this thing gets built. What's the limitation on the allotments for the entire area? In other words, so there's gonna be no limit to septic anymore? So, you're gonna have to basically say, how many, how many, if I put a, if I take this property right now and I put a restaurant on it, I put housing on top of that, how many, how much density can you get per square foot with that system operation?
Well, so the way that, the way that I understand it as a citizen, and I'm being on this and studying, a conventional system like Acton, we actually did a field trip there, they built it thinking that people would come. This would be built for the users, for their current needs as needed, and then if, if there is a restaurant, if something, if somebody tears down and builds a restaurant and there's a different need than, and we need to build onto it in little pods, it would be built on. It's meant to be a step system as you need it. It will grow with the system in phases. So, it's not, we're gonna build this huge system thinking twenty years down full maximum. We're not doing that. It's gonna be a little bit more affordable and in smaller increments as needed. If nobody wants to build a restaurant, then we're gonna build it as it's needed for right now.
Mrs. Sharon, I think Jerry, were you talking about density on each property too? So, if somebody has a little, a little convenience store and they wanna put something in that will be greater use of greater density, they will, they'll be limited by the use of their land. I mean, so, they're not gonna be, you're parking or zoning or building height, things like those, but is somebody gonna be limited to using, okay, you can only have, you know, five hundred gallons a day in a store rather than a restaurant? No, they'll maybe go up to a thousand, fifteen hundred gallons a day, but a restaurant for each property. So, it does, it takes away the limitations that's handcuffing these residents, these.
No, I understand, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of restaurants haven't come to Littleton because they can't handle the septic, even though they don't generate that much.
Can I, can I give a?
It's the Title V, yeah.
Can I give a quick anecdote of how this actually affected me personally, which was, I thought, ironic because I was already involved with this committee, and a year ago, I decided to start a business in town. At four thirty-five King Street, we're Little Town Toys' is. And, you know, there was a vacant spot where the flooring store was. I went to talk to the landlord, and I signed a lease, and I wanted to start a tenant fit-up construction, and I couldn't get a permit from the town because they had to first find out if the septic system could handle my business, which was not retail. It was considered medical, because I'm an audiologist, and medical technically uses more water. And so, they had to do a calculation of the entire building, and I got in by a few gallons. And right now, my landlord is maxed out. He can only have retail or offices. He could not have another person that's considered medical, like an optometrist or a dentist, let alone a restaurant. So, that building, my landlord really wants a sewer because he wants to have more flexibility to offer for his tenants that if someone moves out, he wants to have more options for who can move in.
Right. So, I mean, given the fact that we now have shared septic, and really what you're talking about is building a business run, shared septic that uses the common area, I mean, is that?
What does that mean, Jerry?
Any, do we really need, I mean, is there anything preventing a property owner from sharing their septic with somebody else? Right now, we don't seem to have that provision.
No, there's just no way, there's still no way to put it. You have five properties that can't put their septic system in, or can't expand the septic system. You put, you combine them all on those five lots. There's still no way to put a septic system on those five lots.
When Donald, I mean, let's say Donald's teamed up with, with, with Ran, not necessarily the Toyota property, but the one across the street, they can share their septic.
If they, if they have capacity, I mean, theoretically, right, so if they want, you know, the building next door, whoever, you know, the, they got the refrigerator store, the appliance store, if they said, oh, Hunter Appliance and the, they all want, theoretically, theoretically, I believe they could. I mean, there's a lot of steps to go through with DEP. That's a lot, that's one of the last resorts, but.
That's what I'm saying. When you guys started, you couldn't do that, but you kept running.
Except for a state road, if that's the possibility. What's the pluses and minuses of that to the town? Anything?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not putting a value on it. I'm just saying it's now possible to do something you couldn't do before.
Regardless of the sewer project.
Regardless of the sewer project.
And so, can you explain what that means, that the shared septic, so they, they could just build a big field like down the road and all of those businesses could tap into that?
So, all the, so if you take Ran's property across the street, he's got his own plant too.
Yeah.
He's not at capacity. So, he could technically sell his capacity to somebody else.
He might be though.
He might not, I'm just saying, it's potential.
That's what it means, is to share capacity. You could sell your capacity to someone else.
I think the theory is correct, but I do think he's, from, yeah, the theory works, yes.
And the reason why I bring this up is because it could be that as a business owner, right, the feasibility study that's brought you up to this point, the numbers might change now for a business owner, knowing that you might be able to link into a system that's already built, that's right next door, as opposed to waiting for you to construct a system, pay for his tie-in. The numbers might change. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I think that that gets hashed out in a, in the preliminary design report. If they decide, we're not committing to it, and, you know, say sixty percent of the owners decide they can do that, and they say, we're not signing into this, then we know ahead of time.
I'm just asking if you've considered that as part of.
Oh, yeah, we've considered all of these concerns, and basically, our committee is pretty much done with our study. Now, we're just on an information, informational kick. We wanna get the word out and say what we've learned. We, if the town or if anybody else wants to know more, like these details and the concerns, we really have to just move forward and find out. And if we get partway through, like you said, the town is at risk for, if we find out that it's not feasible from the preliminary design, that's, that's the risk. So.
And our residents, what?
I did want to ask a question.
All right, well, this lady's had her hand up. Why don't somebody?
Yeah, Jen Staff from Buckley Road. So, as I understand it, what you're talking about is a plan that would meet the current needs of current residents, occupants, buildings, commercial properties of this district that you're talking about.
Yep.
So, and you're talking about the potential to build on in the future. So, there's no piece of this that is to encourage economic development in this area. Is that correct?
Well.
Yeah, is that correct? There's no piece of the plan that you're talking about now with the pause?
It stemmed from the MAPC's recommendation to form a Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee for the purpose of economic development.
So, what's the plan that you're talking about right now with the pods would meet existing development, but not future?
No, no.
No, it would absolutely meet the future.
It would have the ability to meet future, but it would be designed for current business occupants.
No, we're gonna figure it out in the preliminary design report.
It's, so it's phases. So, the first, the first phase is gonna be X thousand gallons per day, and you're gonna tie in as many people as you can with that, and then you say get to phase two. If you need more capacity because more people hooking up or because they're using more water, you're gonna add to another phase. But this is definitely for, for economic development, allow people to maximize. So.
Allow people that aren't there yet to come in and build.
Sorry. So, so we're not gonna build, so if people can't expand their properties now because of limited sewer capacity, we're not gonna build a treatment plant with that same limited sewer capacity. It has to increase sewer capacity.
One of the other problems with the sewer capacity is that the soils in that area won't, won't, they're some of the worst soils in the town.
Yeah.
Did you name Jen? I'm sorry. The current design that we have on our preliminary report is based on the current flow, and that's what the initial phase is planned on being built out as, is to handle this current flow.
Okay, so the needs of current residents.
And then if it goes through.
Needs of current residents.
What?
Needs of the current properties that are there.
Yes, and then maybe, and probably, and then maybe a little bit more.
Okay.
But the whole gist of this sewer project is to spur economic development, so a, like that common convenience. With the new village overlay plans, the village district plans, there, I wouldn't say they're strict limitation, but there are great guidelines for how that building can look. If you wanted to tear it down, start over, there are guidelines for how that thing could look, and he's gonna be able to do more with the property. He could do a few doctor's offices, he could put some apartments upstairs, he could put a restaurant down on the, on the first floor. He could, there's some mixed uses where that property becomes more valuable, where he couldn't do it because of the lack of sewer. So, the sewer is to bring in economic development. The buildup, the initial buildout is essentially for what's there now, the flow that's there now, and it's a modular system so that if someone, a property owner decides that they wanna build up within the.
Zoning restrictions.
Zoning restrictions, that capacity can be added on in the future, at a future time, as opposed to.
And future pods, it would have to be added for this future economic development, this future restaurant with houses, a restaurant with apartments above it, who would be paying for those new pods?
The owners, because as that capacity.
The owners that have to have sewer.
Yes.
So, what I'm struggling with here is I hear you talking about how the owners are gonna absorb this cost and the owners are gonna absorb that cost. The town is taking all the risk by putting these monies forward. You're three hundred percent over the budget that you were allocated three years ago.
We're not over any budget. We actually haven't spent, we haven't spent the fifty thousand yet.
I don't know where that two hundred comes from, but.
Yeah, we haven't spent the fifty thousand.
Did I misunderstand that?
They must have.
Don has a question. Thank you for your input.
No, I just have one question. I'm not done yet.
No, we're not here to discuss at the.
No, I'm just, what I'm hearing us talk about here is a publicly subsidized.
No.
System.
Not subsidized.
And Jen, we can't take up their whole meeting. Let me just say it real quick.
I'm happy to talk to you. If you wanna email me through the website, villagecommonsewer.com. You can comment through there.
Okay. So, let's just say the, let's just say the initial, this preliminary design report that is gonna be about five hundred and sixty thousand.
That the town is responsible for.
Yes, and if we go through that whole thing and it finds out nothing's gonna work, the town eats that cost.
A half a million dollars.
Yes. If it goes through, and if it goes through and we're able to fulfill the whole plan and do the complete buildout, that cost gets rolled onto the property owners, and the town recoups that cost. So, there is some risk. What's that?
So, a half a million dollars plus the fifty thousand that you've already been allocated.
No, the fifty thousand's already.
We haven't even spent that yet.
It's already money that's been spent. It's been given to us. It's not on top.
Potentially as much as a half a million dollars.
Okay, I'm gonna, like I said, this is not.
I just wanna be clear that we're talking about at a significant fiscal risk for the town.
Look on their website and see.
And come to, next Tuesday, we have a meeting, Jen. Please come and you'll have all the time.
Please feel free to email me or contact me.
Yeah, I was trying to look this more or less from project management perspective, you know. I've participated in the committee as well, wrote the statement of work, tried to sort of manage it. And one of the concerns I have is the timeline for this and so on. And it isn't, you know, for against, it's trying to understand some of the issues of risk, et cetera. And, yeah, having been the board health, I've approved IBM system.
Is there a question on this or are we singing your accolades?
Excuse me, if you let me talk. I'm tired of getting interrupted, okay?
I'm tired of listening you go over and over what you do and what you say and what board you're on. Just ask the question.
Wait, wait your turn. If you wanna talk, wait your turn.
You think so?
So, yeah, and also Cisco, they've done a very good job. It's well-planned, and they have no risk. And it's reasonable they don't want stuff shipped in their area because it's risky. And it's well over three quarters of what's gonna supply here. Anytime they could pull out and do fine. I mean, they may do that, may never be part of it. So, what I look at is, especially from putting the statement of work together, understand what was going on for feasibility. So, we're chartered, you know, for fifty thousand. There was no timeline. No one's willing to really nail down timelines. It's two and a half years now. Fifty thousand dollars was allocated. There was some amount of work that was done. Hundred thousand was given by the Barr Foundation, Charlesburg Water Share Association threw another twenty-five thousand, Water Department put in thirty-five thousand dollars, public money, that's two hundred thousand, four times the amount. And I agree, there's more work's done. We have a feasibility study done. I've heard Bob Zimmerman say it's feasible. So, he was committed for doing feasibility. Now, you're suggesting two hundred and eighty-six thousand. That's like nine hundred percent of what, you know, was originally chartered. What I wonder is, is it ever going to hit the point where he's, oh, it's all ready? What I wonder is, you know, you see that IBM did perfectly fine as a private enterprise. Their system works great, no failures. Same thing with Sam Park. It was too late for him, so he had to build his own system. Why isn't there some private group doing this? And why isn't there a business association getting together and say, okay, thank you for two hundred thousand dollars worth of work. This is a great gift. We'll take it on because we'll benefit from there. And why aren't they doing it? Because maybe you've already gone to completion as far as your charter to do. Certainly, preliminary study needs to get done, and final study needs to get done, but maybe that's the mission for some other group or private group. And I've been hearing from some other folks. So, I mean, this isn't politics. This is just. So, I mean, this isn't politics, this is just project management, maybe, you know, maybe it's mission accomplished, you know, Bob Zimmerman says feasibility's been proven, why not someone else pick up the tag to do the rest of it?
Just real quick, from what I understand, that there is still always a possibility that there could be public funding for this, that the town may not actually have to pay for it if it were to go to full construction, there could be potential payers of this system that aren't necessarily the town. That's something that could definitely happen. There are people that are interested in this, because it has environmental benefits, as you well know. There are, we got into this for economic reasons, but there are really great environmental benefits to this entire system as well.
I think the concept is good, the question is-
Yeah, we were charged, we were charged with finding out if there is a feasible system that could go into the town common. We are about eighty percent sure that that can happen, but there is a next step. We could just stop right now and waste all that money that we just spent with a, a great report that is actually valued at three to four times what the town actually had to pay, and we could stop and just say, forget it. But why would you do that when the committee has found that it's eighty percent probably feasible to move forward to the next step? The next step is to dip your foot into the waters, test it out, and see, is it worth diving in, or should we back out? And there's no really other choice, other than to go a little bit closer at this point. We either stop and say, yeah, we found it's, it's probably feasible, but let's quit, or we move forward and look a little closer, and we're not saying to dive right into full construction, we're not. We are just saying, let's go to a preliminary design before we go to full design. If the preliminary design says no, then we don't. If it says yes, then we go a little further, we stop along the way.
I can understand that, and, you know, conceptually, I think you've proven the concept works. There's still a question whether it's workable, and Littleton being a small area, I think, what, eighty-six people responded as interested. But my, my question is, why isn't, say, your landlord wants more capacity, and now the folks saying, okay, I'll throw money into, do this next step, and let them take the risk, because they're the main beneficiaries?
Real quick, because I can't answer that question. The only people who can answer that question are property owners, who have been sitting around, a hundred property owners have been sitting around for ten years, and it hasn't happened. They want it, but they can't, how are you going to get a hundred property owners? So if you want that answer, why haven't they got together? It's, you start asking them, I guess, but-
If they have this great gift in their hands, and why don't they have a business association say, okay, we will fund it, this makes sense, it's-
Don, you can phrase it again, you can phrase it a third way, and I still won't be able to answer it, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I do plan to meet with the property owners this summer.
This is not going to be, thank you for enlightening the board, thank you for-
This is what I hear, and I'm just passing it on. This isn't politics, this is more project management risk, et cetera.
I welcome it.
If people want to learn more, they should go to your website, and I'm sure, let me have them, go ahead, Keith.
I just wanted to share one, you know, perspective, that in, in this room on Tuesday night, Finance Committee members met with the team and heard of the presentation as well, and, and some significant feedback from the Finance Committee was, all right, if you're looking at having essentially the property taxpayers risk, you know, if, if there's a risk involved in covering the initial costs, which we might have to pay for without, if there are no sewer users ultimately, that's the cost, if that's the risk, what's the projected reward? Because they get that it's an economic, that this is about economic development. And what they've asked to see is, well, what would the projections be of, of new growth or additional economic activity that could come from having a sewer? I mean, if the purpose is to promote economic development, then put a, then try to put a number on what the potential value of that is. And that's an important thing to understand, that at the end of the day, if, if we're taking the risk, there's no payback, there's no value because we don't have people who are, who are going to add on, you know, if Wells, from discussions with, with Wells, we understand that they would like to be able to take care of the needs of their tenant, IBM, and that part of that need might be to add another building. And then the question comes of where do you put it? And frankly, the only place they can put it right now is over the septic system. So if they want to expand in place, then having a sewer is an opportunity to, to configure the property in a way that wouldn't be open to them. If so, then what's the economic value that might come from that, from that use of the property? And so what FinCom has said is, we need to know, and the committee heard it, we need to know what would the potential reward be from the risk that you're, that you're asking the town to assume in even, in pursuing the feasibility study.
That's a reasonable question, because you think the return on investment, so few properties, and IBM, I can understand, but also IBM on the parking lot, they have Yangtze River's septic system, and, you know, they could convey more under the parking lot too, but, I understand.
All the questions, including if the benefit comes to property, to, to particular properties and businesses, is there a way for us to get them to help cover our risk? And that's well worth our pursuing.
You haven't done a cost benefit analysis.
Yeah, absolutely have, and we just posted a nice informational thing, blog on our website today to address FinCom's questions about this. It is in our, in our study, and I know that people don't want to go and read a two hundred and four-page study, so we pulled the information out, and we put it on our blog. It's a two, three paragraph thing, if you go there and read it.
You can sell resumen?
Yeah, basically, what it found is that in about twenty years, there could be an extra, I think, fifty percent additional, I think, seven point four million extra dollars coming in from this economic potential benefit, something like that. But it's on the blog, you could read the numbers, and it's in the report, if you really do want to read the reports.
In chapter five of the report, it has multiple scenarios, schemes, based on different models of sewer. Now, this model is, is based on a modular system, and in the, in that modular system, you build small, you don't have to build in one spot, you can move it around, you can put the defluent someplace, you can build a building someplace, it doesn't have to be connected. And in today's, in today's technology, the piping can be drilled, so there's very little disruption. It's a very unique thing, opportunity for the town of Littleton, where we have two or three large stakeholders that are very interested in, in buying into the system. Most towns don't have big stakeholders that are willing to take a big sixty percent chunk out of the cost of this whole system. We could be, we could end up with a, a very minimal cost for a lot of benefit to the, of small town. Now, this whole benefit is a tributary from the MIPC report of two thousand and nine to two thousand and ten, and it comes, and it comes directly out of the, the two-thirds vote that the townspeople spoke on, on May of two thousand and ten, where we phased the zoning, and this was the next component to that.
Right, but it was, it was one that, I don't-
It was the limited septic district, not exactly.
You said two, three people really interested, but they haven't paid a dime, and that, that is septic, so.
And to do that, you need to take it to the next step.
But if they're committed, if these people are to commit to something, they need to see that it's, it's very feasible, not just based on our report, but-
But should your sales pitch be to them, not to us?
Can I do a sales pitch? I have an information section.
No, no, no.
The thing you mentioned about-
I understand, I appreciate that.
Private party, from where I understand, in one of our meetings, and maybe Julie can expand on it, but I don't think private party can own a utility, it has to be a public.
That's correct.
So if a private party can't put this together and create the sewer on their own.
Except on me.
That's what I said.
Public, private parties can own sewers.
They can build it in Littleton.
Yeah, IBM, Sam Park.
Yeah, but it's all their own property, it's all their own property, it's not going through city streets.
Well, and then, then we have on me that has a special range.
Mark, just for me to finish up here, so the reason we, the reason we didn't go to town meeting for this money is really what's going on here. We thought we were ready to do that, and it's clear that people are starting to get